Good evening to everyone. Good evening, New London. This is President Dominguez speaking. At this moment, I want to call on Sir Karkayala for the roll call, please.
President Dominguez.
Present.
President Protemp Nartartes. Council Booker, Jr.
Present.
Council Burke.
Present.
Council Goodwin. Council Dice.
Present.
Council Sadie.
Present.
Six present, one absent.
All right, thank you so much. Again, this is President Dominguez. I want to welcome everyone, everyone that's connected at this moment. Mayor Pastrow, Director Reyes, Director McBride, and every one of our residents who have made their way to be with us this evening. At this time, I want to call on Counselor Booker, who will lead us in the prayer and the pledge. Go ahead, Counselor Booker.
Thank you very much, President Dominguez.
You're welcome.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us together this evening. Thank you for waking us up this morning and giving us another day. Thank you that you are the joy, our joy and the strength, and that you promise to keep us and never leave us. Thank you that you never fall short of your word. Give us your wisdom and unite our community, Lord. Direct the city council to work together to make decisions that will grow our city and continue moving New London in a positive direction. Father, please watch over the election tomorrow and enliven and empower each resident in New London to vote for the candidates they believe will move the New London forward into the next chapter. Ensure that each person knows how important their vote is. Oh, Lord, as you say in your scripture, according to Jeremiah 29:7, we are to seek the welfare of the city where you have sent us. And pray to you, Lord, for the city, for in the city's welfare, we will find our welfare. We love and appreciate you, God, in your name. Amen. Dan, please display the American flag for everyone and join me in the pledge allegiance. And President Dominguez will recite the pledge allegiance in Spanish. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Dominguez, prometo lealtad a la bandera de los Estados Unidos de América, a la república que representa una nación ante Dios, indivisible con libertad y justicia para todos.
Thank you very much, President Dominguez.
All right, you're more than welcome. Thank you, Counselor Booker. Again, this is President Dominguez. At this time, I misspoke. I know that we have also Director Red, who is here, and every other department head that is here, we want to welcome you this evening. All right, with that, we will continue on to number three. There is no public hearings. And number four, minutes of the previous meeting. I need a motion on that, please.
I make a motion to accept the minutes from the previous meeting, which was held on, excuse me, which was held on October 18, 2021.
Second in by President Protemp Nartartes.
Okay, thank you very much. And at this time, I'm going to ask, are there any omissions, additions, any abstentions at this time? All right, see none, hear none. Let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, those opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Dice and President Protemp Nartartes. All right, at this time, I'm going to add to the agenda a CAM that I'm going to read at this time. Pursuant to General Statute 8-24, the city council hereby refers the potential sale and transfer of 43 Hempstead Street to the Renaissance City Development Agency, to the City of New London Planning and Zoning Commission for a report on said potential sale and transfer by the city. Can I get a second on that, please?
Second, Counselor Booker.
Okay, he's been seconded to add. All right, end of discussion. All right, see none or hear none, we shall vote. Okay, all those in favor to add it to the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. It has been added to the agenda. Thank you.
Point of order, Council President.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Counselor Sadie, go ahead.
What number will that be?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at right now, sir. That's going to be, I'll tell you right now, give me some time here.
It's like 8.9.
Yes, thank you. It's going to be 8.9. Thank you, President Protemp Nartartes.
Thank you.
All right, all right, thank you, Counselor Sadie. All right, at this time now, we're going to move to 5.0, which is public comment. Just some housekeeping rules as usual. You have been allotted three minutes, three minutes to speak. After you have one minute left, City Clerk Ayala will warn you of the minute you have left and what we would ask you is that you start your closing, your closing statement. We have one person today that has signed up. Make sure that you please state your name and address. At this time, I'm going to call on Kat Gulard.
Good evening. Kat Gulard, 54 Dow Street. So they say that a public insult deserves a public apology. I tend to agree with that statement. And for those watching tonight who are unaware, at the last regular council meeting of October 18, Counselor James Burke had a major public gasp moments after Mayor Pastrow discussed honoring former mayor, educator, and activist Eunice Waller. Counselor Burke suggested that the mayor dress as Mrs. Waller for Halloween. If that weren't enough, not only did no one bring up the inappropriate nature of Counselor Burke's behavior, everybody laughed. And to date, still no one has come out and apologized or addressed it at all, save Counselor Burke in candidate forums. Counselor President Dominguez actually even gave an extra chuckle and thanked Counselor Burke for the funny comments. And so now I turn my attention back to you, the counselors. We all know how important proper decorum is to you. After all, a few months ago, when I used the common phrase, quote, "shoulder get off the pot," end quote, we all had to listen for about 20 minutes while five of you berated me for my abhorrent behavior, the inappropriateness of my use of the word shit. You even tried to ban me from all future council meetings, effectively silencing my voice for saying a simple four-letter word. Yet here we sit two weeks ago and listened to Counselor Burke disgrace the legacy of a woman by suggesting that the mayor dresses her for Halloween in blackface nonetheless. And not only do you all laugh, but you've been silent these last two weeks and it's unacceptable. And so I asked the following, for a public apology to New Londoners and the family of Mrs. Waller from members of city councilor and the city council and the mayor for their role in the last meeting, for a public apology to New Londoners and the family of Mrs. Waller from Counselor Burke, who so callously disgraced her memory, for Counselor Burke to enroll in sensitivity training as would be appropriate for any such incident in any industry at any job. And city council is in fact a job. And for Counselor Burke to resign his campaign for reelection immediately. Us's values have clearly become misaligned and contrary to those of city residents. And for this administration and for any counselor fortunate enough to win a seat in tomorrow's upcoming election, just to be more mindful of the words that they speak and the harm that they cause in the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, there is no other speaker. At this time, I'm going to go to, there are no petitions, and now go to 5.0, which is response to public comment. So response of a comment, I'm going to call on President Protemp Nartartes.
President Dominguez, look, Counselor Burke made a mistake and I'm not going to speak for him because he has reached out and made a public apology. And I will say to Kat Gulard, once again, false narrative, you know, trying to say that all the counselors laugh, it's just not true. That's not what happened, it's not true. All counselors did not start laughing at this mistake, the Counselor Burke admitted that he made. So there will be no resignation from Counselor Burke. We will let the voters decide when they go to the polls tomorrow. That's how you will win a seat on this council. Thanks, President Dominguez.
This is President Dominguez. Thank you, President Protemp Nartartes. At this time, I saw Counselor Dice. You had your hand up. Go ahead.
Yes, this is Counselor Dice and I just want to share that people are human and I appreciated the fact that Councilman Burke reached out to me personally to share that what he did was insensitive. And I guess what hurts more is the fact that I knew this woman very personally and was there when she had passed away. And when someone is dealing with something that's insensitive, one of the things that I know I do is that I lose my thought, my words, because it hurt. It really did hurt, but what hurt more is someone telling me how I should react to something so personal. So Ms. Gulard, I want you to understand because you're not, you're not me. And as a Black woman, right now, when I, when that happened, the best thing that I did for myself, for my mental health, was to be still, be quiet, because I did not want her legacy to be tarnished. I wanted it to go away because it did hurt. But I'm just really sad that you feel comfortable in saying how the other counselors that was there, how we should react. So I want you to make note, the way I reacted was to be quiet and process what was going on and unfortunately had to deal with the hurt. This was Counselor Dice speaking and thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Dice, for your comments. All right, at this time, President Dominguez, I'm going to speak. You know what? Counselor Burke made a mistake. He owned it. He addressed, not only made a comment on Facebook, not only did he make a comment on Facebook, he reached out to some of the NWACCP members and obviously I had a talk with him and we talked. Everyone makes mistakes. You know, the reality is that because of the tricks of the cameras nowadays, people can do whatever and they can make it look like what was said in the way that was said in the intentions. So I know James Burke. I know him for years and he is not racist. This was a mistake, he knows it, and he will not resign. We will let like President Protemp Nartartes wellly express and stated, the people of the city of London will have judgment on that if they so wish to have. So thank you. And with that said, is there any other counselor? I'll call on Counselor Goodwin. Counselor Goodwin, is he here? I don't even know if he is. Oh, he's not? Okay. All right, so let's call on Counselor Burke. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, President Dominguez. This is Counselor Burke. I do feel it necessary to, in the same public forum where I made this grave mistake to address it. So yes, firstly, to my colleagues, I apologize. To the mayor, I apologize. And to all in our community and especially the family of Mrs. Waller, I apologize. And to everyone who had the pleasure of knowing her or anyone else who was offended by my words. Well, I was careless and meant no harm. The harm that my words caused were real and I am committed to doing whatever I can to undo those damages. I have spoken about this previously in more length, but I do feel it necessary to speak in the same form of which my mistake occurred. That being said, to anyone who would like to speak further with me on this issue personally, as always, my cell phone number is public. Don't hesitate to reach out. But again, I do offer my sincere apologies for my careless insensitivity.
Okay, thank you. This is President Dominguez. Thank you, Counselor Burke. At this time, I'm going to call on Counselor Booker.
Yes, thank you very much, President Dominguez. I just want to say briefly, in all my years on this planet, I've never ever met someone a perfect individual. We all fall short in some form or another. And I know Counselor Burke is genuine about what he is saying. He apologized. He is genuine about, he reached out to all the counselors. He reached out to the community as well. And if you have any questions in regards to Counselor Burke's actions, reach out to him at 860-912-9827. That is his number. Feel free because he is there for you and he's always there for the community. All right, this is Counselor Booker. I have no other questions or comments. Thank you.
This is President Dominguez. Thank you, Counselor Booker, for that comment, sir. At this time, I'm going to call on Counselor Sadie.
Thank you very much. This is Counselor John Sadie. I was at the meeting. I too was a personal friend of Eunice Waller, having had the opportunity to serve with her for many years on the New London Democratic Town Committee and also to have watched her be elected to this same board, this same council that we sit on now. I was offended by the comments. I did not chuckle or giggle, but at this point in time, I have seen Counselor Burke's apology on Facebook and I have heard his apology and I appreciate him for that. This is all I have to say on this issue. Thank you, Kat Gulard, for coming out this evening. And that's all I have to say. This is Counselor John Sadie.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor John Sadie. This is President Dominguez. Not sure if Counselor Goodwin is on. I did call on him. I don't know if he's arrived yet. Just want to make sure everyone gets an opportunity to speak. Not seeing him. All right, with that said, thank you. I think that I believe every council has an opportunity to speak. With that said, we will close the response to public comment at this moment.
Point of.
Yeah, go ahead, Counselor Dice.
Point of order is something going on with Councilman Goodwin's computer is lagged. He tried to reboot, so I just note that he's trying to, is this Wi-Fi, to get on the meeting. This is Counselor Dice. Thank you.
This is President Dominguez. Thank you, Counselor Dice, for that information. Okay, so hopefully he'll be able to get on eventually. With that said, we will continue to move on to the next one, which is 5D, which is reports and communications. Director of Law on Attorney Landrigan is here. Does any, good evening, sir? Does any counselor have a question for Attorney Landrigan?
This is Counselor John Sadie. I do.
Go ahead, sir.
Counsel, Attorney Landrigan, on the general side of your report, number five, emails from RCDA Re-Optimus Development Agreement, could you expand upon that, please?
Yeah, for the record, Attorney Jeffrey Landrigan, this was just the development agreement that I believe was in the newspaper. They did an article about it and that was on your last agenda. It was basically just emails with RCDA reporting to them that the council had approved it and coordinating signatures and getting signatures on that document.
Thank you very much and, excuse me, I'll make sure, on the litigation side, number eight, parental prepare and deliver a camera inspection document?
Yeah, Attorney Jeffrey Landrigan, for the record, this is an older Freedom of Information complaint that is up at the Freedom of Information Commission. It was a request for the draft notes that were kept by a third-party investigator who investigated a matter within the police department. We refused that request and objected to it based upon the fact that they were notes, drafts, and also protected by the attorney-client privilege because the investigator was an attorney who was retained through my office. And the hearing officer in that matter wanted to see, we had provided them electronic copies of all of the notes so that they could decide whether or not they were privileged communications and the hearing officer requested paper copies. So we needed to, unfortunately, damage a few trees, make copies and deliver them up to Hartford. So that's what that was.
And have they made a decision on that request yet?
They have not, no.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions. This is Counselor John Sadie.
Okay, this is President Dominguez. Thank you, Counselor John Sadie. Any other counselor that wishes to address Attorney Landrigan with a question at this moment? All right, see none. We shall move on. Thank you, Attorney Landrigan, and we'll see you a little later in the evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next is council committee reports. There were no council committee meetings this evening. We'll move on to the mayor's office of communications. Good evening, Counsel, good evening, Mayor Pastrow.
President Dominguez, I believe Counselor Sadie was trying to.
Oh, Counselor Sadie, I'm sorry. Counselor Sadie?
Thank you very much. Yeah, I would just like to report, hopefully the same time later on in the agenda, that the School Building and Maintenance Committee met on both 8.1, which is the Myers Commercial Movers for New London, and unanimously approved that matter to move forward to council. And also under 8.2 in August of this year, the city council, excuse me, the School Building and Maintenance Committee did vote to approve the multi-vista contract, contract the amount of $55,175. Thank you very much. This is Counselor John Sadie.
Thank you. This is President Dominguez. Thank you, Counselor Sadie. My apologies. Thank you, Mayor, for signaling that out for me. All right, so at this, okay, I'm sorry, I got one more counselor. That's all right, Counselor Dice, go ahead.
This is Counselor Dice. On October 28, the senior commission met and I just want to say thank you to the IT department for getting computers there in the senior center building. And just working diligently to make sure, diligently to make sure that our seniors get the things that they need. And so the meeting just went over how to work collectively together and meet the needs of the seniors. This was Counselor Dice recording out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Dice. This is again President Dominguez. So at this time, see no other counselor that wishes to speak. We will go into the mayor's office of communications. Good evening, Mayor Pastrow.
Good evening, President Dominguez and members of council. I want to start off tonight by offering, on behalf of the city, our condolences to the family of Dan Stewart. First-electman Stewart served Waterford for 14 years. I believe he was the longest-serving first-electman. During that tenure, the bonds between our two municipalities grew only stronger. We have a number of shared services initiatives with Waterford that benefit the residents of both our towns greatly. The last one that I was proud to work on was the emergency communication radio antenna system, which we are partnering with, with Waterford, saving each of our communities a great deal of money. And that's just to mention one, but Dan Stewart retired only two years ago and he certainly deserved a longer and happier retirement. But he'll be greatly missed. His services will be November 14 at Waterford High. I'm happy to announce that through staff's diligent efforts, I want to especially commend our grant writer, Adrian Reyes, who just does a tremendous job. But most recent, the most recent grant we received is $30,000 in funding from the Energize CT Community Partners Initiative. This will allow us to provide home energy solutions and home energy income-eligible projects to residents and businesses in our town and in some of the neighborhoods that we're focusing on, such as the Freedom Trail neighborhood. Also, I want to congratulate, we have another great sports team here in our city, the New London Youth Whaler Division Eight Mini Cheerleading Team. They took first place at competition over the past weekend for the fifth year in a row. They are now eligible to compete in the American Youth Cheerleaders National Competition in Kissimmee, Florida. So as you can imagine, they're in the middle of a fundraising effort to try to raise the money to get that team down to Florida for that experience. So, you know, stay posted on that, on that effort and any organizations or people that can help out, the team would greatly appreciate that. Last week, I had the opportunity to tour the state pier facility with Director Reyes. The amount of work and the transformation of that facility to date is remarkable. You almost don't recognize it compared to what it was six months or a year ago. It's being completely transformed. There is a part of the project, as I'm sure most are aware, that is awaiting final federal permits. However, that's not slowing up the project. We're very excited about this. It's becoming a reality and we're preparing the city for, you know, another great economic lift as we welcome this new industry into our city. Want to congratulate Barbara Neff and all her volunteers, all of the sponsors and participants in Halloween Town last weekend. It was actually the 22nd, Friday the 22nd. It was, the weather cooperated really well and the crowds were, I mean, it was pretty amazing. There was a lot, a lot of children down there in costumes and it was a great time. Also, the next day, on Saturday the 23rd, the Eastern Connecticut Symphony Orchestra had their first concert since the pandemic. Their season was interrupted. They had no season last year and their previous season was interrupted when the pandemic hit. So this was, it was really a great moment at the Guard as the community came back together and they had a really, really nice crowd there for that. I think well over 600, 600 people. If you haven't been to, we're fortunate in this city to have our own symphony orchestra and certainly a great venue for them at the Guard. If you haven't been to one of those performances, you surely should go. It's pretty remarkable. And I think I'm going to leave it there. President Dominguez, I will, I do want to express my appreciation for adding 8.9 to the agenda. It's, we don't, we try to avoid. It's, we don't, we try to avoid that at all costs, as you know. Unfortunately, the timing of this and the timing of the agenda didn't work out. But this is a really important project for the city. As you know, we acquired a piece of property to develop this park in the Freedom Trail neighborhood. This is an opportunity to apply for a grant for the environmental remediation for that, for that, and the timing of the grant application being due December first, and the need to have this title to the property transferred as a technicality for this grant. Just the timing of doing that, we have to start tonight, or we're going to miss that grant application. So I appreciate that, and there'll be staff on this call to further answer any questions when you get to that agenda item. So thank you for your, thank you for your time, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to field them.
This is President Dominguez. Thank you, Mayor Pasrow. At this time, I see Counselor Dice. Go ahead.
This is Counselor Dice, and Mayor, I'd just like to say thank you for, a shout out to our, our young ladies, our little girls, six to eight-year-olds. But I just want to add, if you don't mind, that they, people can cash app them with dollar sign N L F L, which is New London Football League, because it's just exciting when kids get a chance to go to national. And then on my last thing, Mayor, when we are blessed to have people that do excellent work in our community, I'd just like to lift them up, even if they are own counselors here, because Counselor Goodwin was able to take the first place at the Mystic Theater, where, hopefully I get it right. Anyway, for those people, and I just want to acknowledge that, and then to be acknowledged as one hundred.
Most influential black.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.
You know, those things are so important, and I'm going to hate to see this counselor go, you know, because he had done so many wonderful things for our youth and our community, in our community. So I just want to add that, even though I'm kind of choked up, so excuse me. This was Counselor Dice.
Okay, this is President Dominguez. Thank you, Counselor Dice. Anyone else with a question for the mayor this evening? All right. I think that's it. Mayor Pasrow, thank you. All right. I will call on President Protemp Nataz.
Thank you, President Dominguez. Consent agenda six point zero. The agenda proposal set forth at the regular meeting of November first, twenty-one, or either one, accepted for the record, two, referred to committee, named, three, waived from committee, acted upon as proposed, or four, consented to as proposed. Can I get a second?
Second, President Dominguez.
Thank you.
Okay. As I read these, counselors, make sure that you, when you pull it, please state your name. I'll mark it down. All right, seven point oh unfinished business, seven point one, these are either to be received for the record or referred to committee. Seven point one, A, B, C, D, E, F. Okay, eight point oh, new business. Eight point one.
Paul, Counsel Booker.
Thank you, sir. Eight point two, eight point three, eight point four.
This is Counsel Sadi. Pull eight point four.
All right, Sadi, thank you, sir. Eight point five.
This is Counsel Sadi. This is Counsel Sadi. Pull eight point five.
Eight point six.
This is Counsel Sadi. Pull eight point six.
Okay. Eight point seven, eight point eight.
This is Counsel. This is Counsel.
No.
This is Counsel. Hold on, Counselor Sadi. Let me get a moment here. It's President Dominguez. I think I heard Counselor, was it Booker? I don't know who it was. Okay, go ahead.
That's a Booker.
What do you want, sir?
Eight point eight.
Okay, so pull eight point eight. That's Booker. Okay, Counselor Sadi, go ahead, sir.
And I apologize. I was just trying to delay a little bit, just in case anybody else wanted to pull eight point seven. This is Counsel Sadi. I would like to pull eight point seven.
All right. So, eight point seven, eight point nine, nine point oh. Right, ten point oh, no executive session, and then eleven is adjourned, okay? At this time, I'm going to call on President Protemp Nataz.
Thank you, President Dominguez. This is President Protemp Nataz. All items having unanimous support of City Council are hereby adopted. The single roll call vote, the motions are seconded. The chair calls the roll, and the chair declares the motions to be unanimously voted and adopted. Can I get a second?
Seconded by President Dominguez. Okay, thank you, President Protemp Nataz. At this time, I'm going to call on City Clerk Ayala for the roll call, please.
President Dominguez.
Yes.
President Protemp Nataz.
Yes.
Counsel Dice.
Yes.
Counsel Sadi.
Yes.
Counsel Burke.
Yes.
Counsel Booker Junior.
Yes.
Six yes.
Six yes?
Six yes.
Okay.
Oh, I apologize. I didn't know Counsel Goodwin made it to the meeting.
All right, that's all right. He's back on.
Counsel Goodwin makes it seven yes.
All right, we got you there, Counselor Goodwin. All right, so with that said, thank you, City Clerk Ayala. And at this time, all counselors, remember, make sure you move to cam, and we'll begin with eight point one, and that is Counselor Booker.
Thank you very much, President Dominguez. Move to cam.
This is Counsel Sadi. I will second that motion.
Thank you very much, Counsel Sadi. The City Council approves Meyer Commercial Movers rough order of magnitude not to exceed cost estimate and authorizes the mayor to execute it. The original budget for all move activities included, including both the move manager and the movers, was two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. It did not include multiple moves as the project budget was based on a new building. The current budget is not sufficient to cover all nine moves. There is a shortfall of a hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and forty-one cents. A transfer from the owner's contingency is proposed to fund the total anticipated cost of three hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and forty-one cents. That includes the move manager and all nine moves. The amounts invoiced will be based on actual costs of materials and labor for each move completed by the movers. Through you, President Dominguez, to Director McBride. For clarification for the residents, the one hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and forty-one cents needed to be reallocated to cover the total cost of the project is being moved from the contingency from what account of the project? Is this contingency fund that is available for the entire building project? Just for clarification for the residents, please.
Yeah, this is Director McBride. I worked with Diana McNeil on this in the past, so I prefer to defer to her. She has a specific account number of the contingency account that you're requesting. So Diana McNeil, if you could assist, that would be great.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Council President and City Councilors and others. This is Diana McNeil. I am the project manager for New London High School, as stated in the cam. The contingency is a line item within the hundred and eight million dollar budget for the entire project. That contingency was funded to provide, you know, shortfalls for change orders and professional fees as needed. This move management process is the last component of this project, is made up both the movers and the move managers, and we need to make sure that the move management process is completely funded in case those funds are needed. Now, that does not mean this is a lump sum, and all of the amount is going to be charged. But it should be there so that we can cut appeal and make sure that we can start charging the moves against that line item.
Thank you very much, Project Manager Diana McNeil. Through you, President Dominguez, back to Project Manager Diana McNeil. Can you, just for clarification, can you please explain what the move manager item is that is listed as a cost of one hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars on page eleven of the backup for this cam? And how is this different from the onsite supervisor cost that is listed for each of the nine moves and pages, two through nine, of the backup for this cam? I would agree. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes, this is Diana McNeil, Project Manager. Counselor Booker, you are looking at the two components of the move management process. The hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars is for the services provided by the move manager, who is Arcadis, who was, came before you several months ago, and you approved them to become the move manager for this project. Meyer Commercial Moving, on the other hand, is the movers. They're the ones that are actually executing the move under the supervision of the move manager. So at the end of the day, we will have two separate contracts.
Thank you very much, Project Manager Diana McNeil. This is Counsel Booker. I have no further questions or comments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McNeil, and also thank you, Counselor Booker, for those questions. At this time, I'm going to call on any other counselor that wishes to ask a question on this cam. This is President Dominguez. Counselor Goodwin, go ahead, sir.
This is Counsel Goodwin. Through you, Council President, Ms. McNeil. Ms. McNeil, I just was curious. You had mentioned that the total funding that's coming out of contingency may not be used. What happens if that happens?
That is a great question. This is Diana McNeil. Again, the contingency bucket, so to speak, is a fluid one. The funding that is not used goes back to contingency.
Counselor Goodwin here, and I would assume, once that fund is needed again, should you guys fall under budget for what's being allocated, you would have to come back to us. It can't just be transferred to something else?
We, on a weekly basis, engage with the subcommittee for this project on a change order review process. These are all the change orders for the, for the project. There's roughly four hundred change orders at this point. They're reviewed weekly, and if there's a need for transfer from the contingency to, to fund those P C Os or those change orders, that's an ongoing process. The contingency, if I may say, is very healthy. We've only used roughly twenty percent of it for this project, which is very unusual. We started at four point six million dollars when the G M P was signed. We used a little bit less than a million dollars in about seventeen months of work. So the subcommittee working with the project team and many other stakeholders has been very diligent in watching those dollars very carefully.
And last question, Counsel Goodwin here, to Ms. McNeil. Just curious, what's a typical percentage that projects fall under at this point in time in terms of use of contingency?
We look at it in terms of change orders. So change orders tend to fall roughly three percent of project costs. So think about, you know, a hundred million dollar project, you know, if you're doing three million dollars in, in, in change orders, you're doing very well. It's also worth mentioning that the state has a cap on the dollars that can be allocated specifically to the change orders of a maximum of five percent. So if you should go over that, obviously, that becomes ineligible. We're nowhere near that. As I've said, we've used a little less than a million dollars. So we have roughly three and a half million dollars left in the contingency that either will remain unused at the end of the project, or will be used to fund other alternates that were not included in the G M P, because we wanted to get the main construction going, and we were trying really, really hard to make sure that the the dollars were balanced during the G M P time.
Thank you. I have no further questions, and thank you for touching on the ineligible. That's where I was getting at, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, this is President Dominguez. Thank you. All right, at this time, any other counselor that wishes to speak on this cam? Counselor Sadi, go ahead.
Thank you very much. As the liaison to the Board of Education and as the Chair of the School Building Maintenance Committee, just want to remind this council that we do meet on a monthly basis on the third Friday, excuse me, fourth Friday of every month, to oversee this project, and the School Maintenance and Building Committee did unanimously approve this contract. So I will be supporting this cam. Thank you very much. This is Counsel John Sadi.
Okay, this is President Dominguez. Thank you, Counselor Sadi. Okay. Let's move to vote for eight point wide, the Meyer Commercial Movers for New London High School. All right, this is not a, not a ordinance, so we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. Let's proceed to the next one.
Thank you very much.
Yep, you're more than welcome. Thank you, Ms. McNeil. We'll move on to eight point four. Counselor Sadi.
Move to cam.
Second. Counsel Booker.
Counsel Booker has a second.
Thank you very much. City Council approves ordinance number one, excuse me, eleven dash zero one dash two one dash zero one, in the amount of three thousand one hundred dollars made from the funding received from donations, no, I apologize, eight point four. City Council approves ordinance eleven dash zero one dash two one dash zero two, in the amount of forty-eight thousand, four fifty-two made from funding received from the United States Department of Homeland Security for the F Y I two thousand twenty-one Port Security Grant Program. The ordinance is given its first and second reading in the process passed by title only. All councils having copies, and the third reading of subject matter is adopted by roll call vote. Through you, Council President, to Finance Director McBride. Is there a cost match in this grant in the amount of twelve thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars to be used from non-federal funds?
My understanding is the match requirement, this is Director McBride, is the twelve thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars. And I do work with Andrea to making sure we are still under what the council approved on any match requirements. We are not, we have not capped out what the council approved for the match requirements.
So that means that we have money in the budget to match this, this match?
Yes, we still have, I believe, eighty or ninety thousand of numbers, of budgetary dollars.
Thank you very much. I have no further questions at this point in time in reference to this cam. I do have concern, though, about the adoption by a single roll call vote, and I would prefer that this be done on three separate readings. But we'll go with the pleasure of the council.
Okay, this is President Dominguez. Thank you, Counsel Sadi. All right, any other counselor that wishes to speak on this cam at this moment? Okay, see you none. We will vote. This is a roll call vote. So, City Clerk Ayala.
Counsel Goodwin.
Yes.
Counsel Dice.
Yes.
President Protemp Nataz.
Yes.
Counsel Sadi.
Yes.
Counsel Booker Junior.
Yes.
Counsel Burke.
Yes.
President Dominguez.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Okay, so the motion carries ordinance for the Port Security Grant has passed. All right, let's move on to the next one. Sadi, eight point five, Ordinance Justice Assistance Grant.
Move to cam.
Counsel Dice, second.
City Council approves orders one one dash zero one dash two one dash zero three in the amount of seventeen thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars made from funding received from the U S State, United States Office of Justice Programs, two thousand twenty-one, B J A, F Y two zero two one. Edward Brian Memorial Justice Assistance Grant G J A G. The ordinance is given its first and second reading in the process of passage by. Uh title only, all councils having copies and the third reading of subject ordinance is adopted by roll call vote. Through you, Council President, uh to uh Budget Director McBride, um. Is there any match for this grant?
There is no match uh for this grant.
Okay, the total, the total is seventeen thousand one twenty three, and that breaks down into four thousand nine sixty eight per personnel. And twelve thousand one fifty five for supplies. Uh and this this grant uh will fund the New London Police Youth. The Department Youth uh Police Academy Program. Um do you know um what the twelve thousand dollars in supplies will be?
I'm not uh in tune to the particulars, but I believe the grants uh administrator is on this call as well. Is that correct? Is Adriana, are you available?
Hi, yes, this is Adriana Reyes, the Grants Coordinator. The supplies, I believe, are going to be uniforms for the. The participants, so um it was gonna be, I think, shirts, boots. They're gonna have a complete uniform set. And also supplies as far as um office supplies so they could do activities.
And my understanding that this is an eight-week program and it is free to New London residents. Is that correct?
Correct.
So I'd like to take this opportunity to personally thank you for applying for this grant. Uh I think it's a wonderful opportunity for the youth of New London, and again, thank you very much. I plan on supporting this grant. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, this is President Dominguez. Thank you, our Counselor Sadi, and thank you, Adriana. Is there anyone else, any other counselor that wishes to speak on this cam? Okay, see none. We shall vote. Okay, uh this is again a roll call vote. Let's call on City Clerk Ayala.
Counselor Sadi.
Yes.
Counselor Burke.
Yes.
Counselor Booker Junior.
Yes.
President Dominguez.
Yes.
Counselor Dice.
Yes.
Counselor Goodwin.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Natares.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. I have not.
Okay, yes, President Pro Temp Natares.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Okay, uh this is President Dominguez. All right, so eight point five, the ordinance for Justice Assistance Grant has carried. All right. Let's move on. Next cam, eight point six ordinance cops, community, police development program award. Uh Counselor Sadi.
Move to cam.
Second it by Counselor Booker.
The City Council approved orders number eleven dash zero one dash two one dash zero four in the amount of seventy thousand four hundred two dollars made from funding received. From the United States Department of Justice Cops Community Police Development CPD Program Award. The ordinance is given its first. And second reading in the process of passage by title only. All councils having copies and third reading of subject ordinance is adopted by roll call vote. Um so first and foremost, um I would like to say that uh again to Adrian Reyes. Um thank you very much for uh your help uh with with this grant. Um I think this is probably one of the most important grants the city of New London uh will receive. Um it is for um de-escalation training of in our police department. Um you know, hopefully uh there won't be situations where we have minor offenses um leading uh to escalation. Uh by our police force and it would end up in uh inappropriate uh actions being taken up to and including death. And uh you know, and when I worked for Judicial, we had what was called non-violent crisis intervention. Uh which it was a de-escalation type tactic, and I think that it's something that uh will be of great benefit. To all police officers uh in in this community. Um uh through you, Council President, um to uh Budget Director McBride. Uh is there any match uh required with this grant?
This is Director McBride. There is no match for this grant.
Thank you very much for that, and uh again, uh training in the amount of two thousand six hundred uh forty eight. Equipment sixty two thousand five hundred and overtime in the amount of fifty five thousand two hundred fifty three dollars. With a project total of seventy thousand four hundred one dollars, which I believe is money well spent. Uh question for Adrian Reyes, uh could you talk a little bit about uh the sixty two thousand dollars that will be required? Uh for uh equipment in this situation, in this training, in this grant?
Sure. Hi, this is Adrian Reyes, Grants Coordinator. The equipment, um I worked with Sergeant Zelensky, who was a really big help, and also Chief Brian Wright. They um they were able to get a quote for a de-escalation simulator, which we would be the first in Connecticut, I believe, so we got a special price for that. The simulator comes with tons of different scenarios and training um the officers and. Two officers, I believe, are going to be trained with the equipment. Then they'll train the rest of the police force. Um so that's that's what the sixty two thousand dollars is. It's for that. Um it's a very like new um technology. So it's an actual simulator in the community. I think at some point would be invited to view how it works. So that was part of the grant as well.
And again, I'm glad to hear that uh New London will be a leader uh in this type of uh training. So this is uh Counselor John Sadi. I have no further questions at this time.
Yep. Thank you, Counselor Sadi. This is President Dominguez, and just a point of order, Counselor Sadi. Uh you stated the total to be seventy thousand four hundred and one, and the correct uh total is seventy thousand four hundred and two. Just to make sure that uh that's corrected on.
On our backup with seventy thousand four oh one point eight four rounded up, I guess that's four seven oh two. Thank you very much for that correction, Council President.
Yes, sir, you're more than welcome. All right, any other counselor that we should speak on this uh cam? See a nun. All right, let's vote. Uh City uh Clerk Ayala, sir.
Counselor Dice.
Yes.
Counselor Sadi.
Yes.
President Dominguez.
Yes.
Counselor Burke.
Yes.
Counselor Goodwin.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Natares.
Yes.
Counselor Booker Junior.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Okay, so the motion carries there cops, community, police development program award. Thank you. Let's move on to eight point seven ordinance marketing. Uh Counselor Sadi.
Move to cam.
Second it by Counselor Booker.
City Council approved orders number eleven dash zero one dash two one dash zero five in the amount of eight thousand three hundred and thirty four dollars. Made from the remaining amount of the grant received during FYI two thousand twenty one that fell to fund balance, that. Fell to fund balance. The ordinance is given the first and second reading in process of passage. By title only, all councils having copies and the third reading of subject ordinance is adopted by roll call vote. Um through you uh to uh Economic Development uh Director Felix Reyes.
Yes, this is Felix Reyes. I I'm here this evening.
Yeah, now my understanding is that uh the original uh award uh was for uh two hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct?
That is the the two hundred dollars represents the entire marketing uh budget. Um and I can break that down. It's it was a hundred thousand came from city um general funds, um parcel J Economic Development, twenty five thousand and seventy five thousand general funds. For marketing, and we leveraged that for an additional hundred thousand dollars, seventy five thousand for trip and a twenty five thousand. For the Eastern Connecticut Tourism. So when you total that up, it was a two hundred thousand dollar campaign budget.
Okay, and uh right now, so when it when it says uh in the ordinance um. Made from the remaining amount of a grant received, uh is is the grant you're talking about the hundred thousand received? Or or are you talking about eight thousand three hundred thirty four dollars from city funds?
Um the um I'm not sure if it was a grants received or if was if it was city funds, but um what the finance did was we created a unity fund and we created a pro- a project fund. Um and that campaign ended September thirtieth, obviously a couple months after the fiscal year. Um so that um the eight thousand that were that in question was not carried forward to pay off the remaining contracts. Um for um that marketing campaign. So it 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 was coming out of this year's uh twenty one twenty two budget. Um that affects our ability to leverage for the next marketing campaign. So that the ask was um to pay that with the fund balance. So we can keep our twenty one twenty two seventy five thousand clean seventy five to leverage that for future funding that you see on tonight's um agenda as well.
So this eight thousand three thirty four is money that we still owe?
No, we we've 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 paid those contracts out with this year's money. We're trying to reimburse our twenty one twenty two budget line item for marketing. Um um back to seventy five thousand.
Thank you very much for that clarification. I have no further questions. This is Counselor John Sadi.
Thank you, Counselor John Sadi. This is uh President Dominguez. I see uh Director McBride, he hands it up. Sir, go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify, we had received or the ODP Department had received some funding from grants uh from trip and from the um. Uh Eastern Connecticut Tourism. That money was received prior to six thirty. So the eight thousand dollars that uh Director Reyes is talking about. That money was received in the city and then that money we what we, as we do with all funds, we put into the general fund. Uh what should have happened is we should have allocated it uh to a future program in in the future because it was a fiscal year and not dropped it to the general fund in this. This this and this appropriation tonight takes that money that was appropriated into fund balance and recoups it out in order to use it for to spend in twenty twenty two.
Okay, thank you, Director McBride. This is um uh President Dominguez. Uh thank you for that clar- clarification. All right, at this moment, we're gonna vote unless anyone else has uh any further discussion on this cam. Right, see none. We'll go and vote. Uh this is again a an ordinance, so we will call on City Clerk Ayala.
President Dominguez.
Yes.
Counselor Burke.
Yes.
Counselor Goodwin.
Yes.
Counselor Dice.
Yes.
Counselor Sadi.
Yes.
President Pro Temp Natares.
Yes.
Counselor Booker Junior.
Yes.
Seven yes.
Okay, thank you. This is President Dominguez. The motion carries. We'll move on to the next one, which is eight point eight Grant Trip, Connecticut. Next, that is Counselor Booker.
Thank you very much, President Dominguez. Move the cam.
Counselor Dice, second.
Thank you very much, Counselor Dice. The City Council hereby resolves and authorizes the mayor to apply for funding to CT next dash trip. In the amount of one hundred thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the aim for the Thames two point oh. And to sign any other document necessary and incidental to effectuating said grant. Through you, President Dominguez, to Director Reyes. Please explain more about um blue tech economic development in regards to what specific what specific business increases? Do you believe will result from this investment?
Hi, good evening, uh Counselor Booker Junior. This is uh Felix Reyes, ODP. Um thank you for the uh for the question. So this year's um trip uh grant application is really to focus on uh blue technology, supply chains. Um existing um blue technology along the Thames River and really start creating uh a marketing, kind of a marketing engine um behind that. Uh we are very much at the genesis um of the offshore wind and other supply chains that come with that, but the state of Connecticut. Um understands that the Thames River is going to be a big player um in the blue technology moving forward. And they are um essentially planting seeds and investing in the city of New London to start to look at some marketing strategies of how to attract. Um supply chains, how to attract talent, how to attract engineers, um technology, manufacturing um to the city of New London. Um and the way we've handled that last year was really just get out to those markets who we are. It was a a marketing campaign that talked about the city, uh the things that we do, the things that we are great at, the people, uh the culture. Uh but this um this next um cycle, um a trip is looking for us to do a little bit more digging and and a little bit more finding, retooling on. Uh uh getting down to who are the people in the industries. Um and 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 how do we leverage that to start attracting other like um industries um to the city of New London? It's gonna be very challenging because we're so because it's so new, um but we're up for it. Uh Quinn and Harry is our marketing agency and partner. Uh we will look to be hiring um other vendors and and other consultants um that that as required. Uh to really fulfill the um the objective um of this grant. So this is an investment in the city for us to. Uh be part of the uh blue technology uh industry that is coming to Connecticut.
Thank you very much, uh Director Reyes. Also, just for clarification for the residents, can you please explain what is the difference? What what is the difference is in this marketing campaign with blue tech and the current marketing campaign developed New London is already engaged in with Quinn and Harry?
So this one's this one's it's more it's it's just more specific. It it doesn't mean that we can't use these dollars to market our restaurants. Um it doesn't mean we can't use these dollars to market tourism. Um but the focus, the majority of the the real focus is to. Um start engaging with uh blue technology industries and all the supply chains, um technologies, manufacturers that are associated with that market. Um so that's gonna be the difference. It's just the next level, as explained earlier. This first one was really about kind of. Sure, you know, setting up an infrastructure to tell the world who we are. We set up a tourism website. We increased um our social media. Uh we did a develop New London. We did a lot more video content. Um so the world got to see who we are, um what we can offer. Now we're gonna be just a little bit more focused and targeting those actual sectors that represent the blue technologies. And really attract them and bring them here to New London.
Yeah, thank you also for that. And you know, sometimes um you know, with businesses and economic development, you know, can you also clarify a little bit? Give give like specific examples of what will be highlighted for blue tech in a New London Cultural District Commission's work as well?
Sure, so um it could be as um as simple as uh working with the uh contractors at State Pier. And getting them to understand what's available in our downtown, right? What are the restaurants, where to eat, where to shop, where to live? Um those are things that we're working on. That there's a marketing um strategy uh behind doing that to even um. You know, what's going on in Europe? What's going on in other countries? Um how are we communicating with those towns and cities? That have been doing this for twenty years, and how do we start to forecast um what New London can be and what we need to be um prepared for? And then and then when doing so, you start to network with those industries and businesses that already been there, start making those connections. We have a lot of manufacturing. There's a lot of talent in um uh that is a it's a it's a it's a it's um. Uh a tools, a tools and and a skill set that is gonna be easily transferable over from welding submarines to weld be welding turbines. You know, it's it's making sure that, you know, our workforce is also able and has that ability to kind of transfer over into. New job opportunities that are going to be created with uh this tech uh blue technology. So all of that is part of, you know, this marketing effort. Uh to really highlight and showcase and let people know and communicate what's available.
Thank you very much for that. And also my last question, um. Thank you very much for that. And also my last question, because just so I just want everyone to have a better understanding of exactly what is occurring. The grant proposal makes mention of Phase Two. Can you please describe what Phase One has been, just for clarification, just for everyone, all the residents?
Sure. So, you know, this is our second year. So we, you know, Phase One is like year one, Phase Two is year two. So our Phase One was really laying down the tracks, you know, for Phase Two, which is the train. I like to always see, I always like to use that metaphor. So we've really built an infrastructure, you know, how do we make sure that we have the tools and the content ready to share and making sure that? So that's, you know, website creating, that's networking, social media was increased. You know, our reach, you know, quadrupled, right? Because we really didn't come, we really just started, you know, our social media and digital content and video content. We're just in the infancy of that. So that was a huge launch for us. But now we've got to be, you know, more, we've got to be more specific and more strategic and more intentional on how we market to make sure that we get greater impact and use these dollars in a manner which it fulfills the objective of the grant. But also, obviously, everything that we do is always residents first. What's the best impact and benefit for our residents? And I see that as attracting jobs, attracting, you know, arts and culture and attracting opportunity more than anything.
Thank you very much, Director Reyes, for your informative presentation and your explanation as to on this project. Greatly appreciate all your work. This is Councilor Booker. I have no further questions or comments. Thanks again for everything.
Okay, thank you. This is President Dominguez. Thank you, Councilor Booker. And thank you, Director Reyes, for answering all those questions. At this time, is there any other councillor? Any other councillor that we should address this cam? Alright, Councilor Sadi. I don't know if your hand is up or it was just left up there?
No, I took it down. I put it back up. I will take it down now. Thank you very much for the opportunity. Originally, my question was on the front page of our backup. The question was, is there a match required? And the question was yes. And the amount of the match is 115,000. And the source of that match was 75,000, 2022 marketing budget, $10,000 Eastern Connecticut Regional Tourism Grant, and then match funds for ARPA funds in the amount of 25,000. My total would then only be 100,000. So my question is through you to Director McBride, where is the other 5,000 coming from?
Director McBride, this is Director Reyes. I can answer that. That may have been a miscalculation if the math doesn't work. But it is Eastern Connecticut Tourism and the rest of the matching funds will be coming out of the Arts and Tourism, ARPA funding budget allocation that was approved by council on Wednesday.
Thank you very much for that clarification. Now, my understanding is that we are, the city of New London is required to spend $1.15 for each $1 that is requested. Is that correct? Through that is. To Director.
Yes, that is correct for us to leverage and be awarded 100,000. That is correct. Those are the rules of the grant.
Okay, and then I would turn you to page five of 8.8, which is a memo, inter-office memo to Director McBride from Adriana Reyes, which is grant coordinator dated 10/25. And that memo is to confirm that the remaining balance in the grant match fund is 110,000. The starting balance was 149,998. So a little bit mixed up with, and I know, it sounds to me as though it's coming from separate funds, Director McBride, but could you explain what that memo means? Because I thought we were asking for 115, but only $25,000 is coming out of our grant match fund?
Yes, this is Director McBride. The 115,000 is what, as Felix alluded to earlier, is what the city in one way or another needs to provide the match of the 100,000. That 115,000 is going to come from the 2022 marketing budget within Felix's area, the Eastern Connecticut Regional Tourism Grant for 10,000, and then 25, which as you alluded to earlier should be 30,000, will either come from the ARPA funds category of the arts and culture. But in working through this with Felix and Adriana, we could not put that amount to come out of that category because we'd have to go back to council for future approval, as we previously discussed. So what I talked to Adriana about was could you use the matching grant funds to come up with that number? So she then therefore supplied this inter-office memo as backup support. And we do, she's providing this backup support anytime we need to utilize that 149,000 that council approved. She puts this memo back there to state what the balance is in that account. And as of prior to this approval, that balance, that account was 110,000. So there's 110,000 in that account as of now, of which initially stated 25,000 may become 30,000 will be utilized. So still within budgetary allows.
Thank you very much for that explanation. I have no further questions.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Sadi. This is President Dominguez. At this time, we are going to vote.
President Dominguez.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I just have one quick question.
Alright, well, hold on, hold on. This is Councilor, thank you, Councilor Booker. Give me a minute because I think I saw Councilor Goodwin, who has had not a chance yet to speak, so let me go to him. And then, let me go, let me just, hold on, everybody. It's just that, you know what, I forgot to tell you guys to ask maybe two questions and some of you have taken, you know, a couple, and I understand, but I'm going to come back to that again. Alright, so we're going to go around to go win and then we'll go around to anybody else. And if nobody else has a question, then Councilor Booker, we'll go back to you, okay?
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Yep, you're more than welcome. Alright, so at this time, the floor is yours, Councilor Goodwin. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Councilor Goodwin, Director Reyes. Just wanted to clarify, that $10,000 from the regional tourism, is that remaining funding from the past year's spend or is that new money? That's being allocated towards this match? That was the, that was the last round of additional Eastern Connecticut Tourism funding that we were awarded. So we were able to leverage that 10,000 because we didn't leverage that money on the previous campaign. So we're doing it on this campaign. Understood. And can I get, or can the councillor at large get a copy of an audit, a financial audit from Quinn and Harry and/or your department? Absolutely, it's required as part of the TRIP fund. So as soon as I get my hands on that, I will send a memo to City Council with the results of that audit and just a little more clarification. So that's just the how we performed. It's kind of like a performance sheet, I would call that. And how we, and what we spent the money on. And what we spent. Correct, so it should correlate to that. And I think my last comment would be to the administration. It looks like TRIP has pivoted from the last spending allotment to focus on blue trip in technology, which means, or hopefully it means that we'll look holistically at, you know, leveraging our workforce or our partnerships to train our youth and/or young adults to be able to get New London residents jobs within this so-called booming industry, if you will. Hopefully, we can leverage either our ARPA funds or our partnerships with places like OIC, etc. to make sure that New London residents get jobs. I know it's always at the front of our minds, but in terms of how many residents and minorities, speaking specifically for minorities who were unrepresented, their percentage in these jobs are still low and I think we can be a little bit more aggressive on it. No further comments at this time or questions?
This is President Dominguez. Any other councillor that we should speak? At this time, alright, seeing none, I'll go back to Councilor Booker. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much, President Dominguez. Through you, President Dominguez, to Director Reyes. Director Reyes, can you just explain blue technology in layman's terms? Just so everyone is clear, exactly what is blue technology, that's all.
It's, there's a lot of definitions, but the way I look at, the way I look at it, it's, we are looking at green, you know, when you talked about green technology, sustainable technology, right? The offshore wind industry is creating a whole new industry that this country hasn't seen. And we've seen wind turbines, sustainability technology, and that's on land, but not offshore. So I think it's just they use the buzzword "blue tech" because this is happening in parts of the Atlantic, I believe maybe some parts of the Pacific, but the Atlantic coast from where these are going to be placed has some of the highest wind speeds or how the jet stream works. So they're the most efficient there. So seeing that technology on the water is where this is coming from. But it really is just a new industry of sustainable energy out on the water. I mean, that's just, that's all it is. It's a cute catch, you know, catchphrase for this new industry.
Thank you very much. I just want everyone to have a clear understanding of exactly the direction we're moving in, that's all. So thank you. This is Councilor Booker. I have no further questions or comments.
Okay, this is President Dominguez. Thank you, Councilor Booker, and thank you, Director Reyes, for answering that question. Alright, at this time, we are going to vote. Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Alright, so the motion carries for TRIP Connecticut next, alright? At this time, I'm going to call on President Protemp Nartartas to give us the last motion.
Listen to the drone.
I will second that. President Dominguez will second that motion, alright? Any discussion? Seeing none, okay, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. Okay, this meeting adjourns at 8:21 PM.
Have a great day.
Hasta mañana.